Good evening. The forty-first meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to all members, the press, and members of the general public, please ensure that your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum on silent to ensure that we do not disrupt today's hearing. Please also take a moment, this opportunity, to again silence all of your devices. So our invocation for this evening will be delivered by the amazing Bishop Dr. Angel Nunez of the Bilingual Christian Church of Baltimore. Bishop Nunez, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Would you please close your eyes?
God, we come before your presence this evening. We have on our agenda many things relevant to our city government. I plead that you would give these men and women wisdom, knowledge, guidance. Be with them in making the important decisions that will benefit our community and help us to move forward in such a time as this. Thank you for every single one of them. I ask for your blessing over their lives, over their families, and of course, over everything that they are doing at this time. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Nunez. Please stand with me as we state the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Members, we have two brief but timely presentations for tonight's showcase. First, we will continue our recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month by calling Ms. Monica Vasquez. She's the Executive Director of Centro Sol, and she will tell us a little bit about her work. Ms. Vasquez, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to come here before you to share a little bit of the work that we do at Centro Sol, the Center for Health and Opportunities for Latinos. It was established as an effort of advocacy back in 2013 as the first center of excellence at Johns Hopkins Medicine and University. Our mission... Sorry, I'm gonna step back a little bit just to say that Baltimore City has become, and it is, a very diverse city, and we have seen an important increase of the Latino population. In the last census in 2021, more than seventy-five percent increase of the Latino population in Baltimore City and also across the county and state. As I was saying, Centro Sol was established in 2013 as the first center of excellence at Johns Hopkins University of Medicine to serve the growing population of Latinos and understand better with data and evidence. Our mission is to promote equity in health and opportunities for Latinos in collaboration with organizations and the public. Our vision is to achieve equity for all Baltimore City residents regardless of where they are from. We have worked to promote clinical innovations, advocating for diversifying the workforce and education, promoting innovative research practices based on community participation, and we are working to build collaboration to promote adjust policy and systems change. We do our work by organizing our different activities in four main areas: education, advocacy, research, and outreach, that I'll talk a little bit more before I leave today. To diversify the workforce, we have been working with youth, Latino youth, most of them immigrants, but some of them the first Baltimoreans in their families. Providing mentoring and tutoring across different ages and schools. Our last mentoring cohort had more than fourteen schools from Baltimore, and we also extend our programming in the summer, providing paid internships for fifteen to thirty youth. We work with volunteer mentors, and we provide weekly sessions and community service hours for our youth during the school year. In our outreach and advocacy efforts, we're trying to bring together a multidisciplinary cohort of professionals and community members. For outreach, we participate in organized community meetings. We are in the community... I kinda look like a Latina, so we are in the community all the time for everything we do. We organize weekly events, actions with local partners and community leaders, and we are very grateful for many of you for supporting our work. We also conduct research and community-based advisory boards, so we bring people to our research to inform the work that we do. We have a collaboration with a multidisciplinary group of professionals and policymakers. We have monthly checking meetings to discuss challenges in policy implementation, and we also work on actions to promote change. To inform all of this work, we have been conducting research since many years, but more regularly since 2014. We have provided formal consultations. We have a process to make requests for our research. We have a coordinator that helps respond to all the requests. We support participant recruitment and also staff recruitment and work with researchers on material review and study planning. In the graphic on your screen, you see a sun that has many planets around it. Those are the research areas that we work and focus on, but these are only a few and the many more that need to be conducted. Part of the research that we do is this graphic that has the information of participation from community members, organizations, and patients that have informed us about what is depression. Some of the obstacles that they experience when they are trying to access services around depression, and that includes stigma, denial, English-only providers, lack of cultural competent care, and what are some facilitators. They see the community and the support as a hub to connect to their needs. In a symposium that we organized back in May, we built a conversation with different providers that were interested in serving the Latino population, especially trying to address the challenges that they are experiencing. In the next graphic, you will see an example of this evidence-based and culturally appropriate program called Fortalece Tu Bienestar, or Strengthening Your Well-Being. That was to respond to the stigma and the needs to connect patients to services that were culturally appropriate for them. In this campaign, and you will see the link on the graphic on the screen, you can access information that is culturally relevant. We didn't make it up. We work with community members in Baltimore City to understand what their needs are, and we work with community leaders to share stories around depression and the challenges to access mental health care. The idea around this campaign is to build awareness and to strengthen and leverage the resources that we have in our communities. In our last, almost last slide, I share multi-level action to address depression that I hope you consider, and I will be happy to share more about it. It comes, it's a socioecological framework that helps inform how we can better provide culturally appropriate services, mental health services for Latinos at the individual, interpersonal, institutional, community, and public policy levels. We focus our attention in community health workers, but also the interconnection and partnerships with health systems. And Baltimore City is really a reference for health system, large health systems. In the next slide, which is our last one, is the information about Centro Sol, where you can find more resources that are culturally appropriate for our Latino community, and I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Vasquez, it is my pleasure now to welcome Ms. Enrique Yang, Executive Director of Poe Baltimore and the Edgar Allan Poe House and Museum. On this weekend, they will celebrate the International Edgar Allan Poe Festival and Awards. Director Yang, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting us to speak. It's my very first time in this room. Very exciting for us. Well, a plug for Poe House, the Edgar Allan Poe House and Museum, a very tiny house museum in West Baltimore, the last surviving home in the city where Edgar Allan Poe lived with members of his family. Poe, in his lifetime, never owned property. Now that he's dead, you can visit three of the houses that he lived in. This is the only one that's left here in Baltimore. We are open every Thursday through Sunday from eleven to four. Reservations only at this time, but we are a popular house museum, and we are very pleased to be putting on this weekend, the next slide, the fifth International Edgar Allan Poe Festival and Awards. In the very beginning, "International" was very much a statement of intention, but over the years, we have had several award winners from around the world. Poe folk come to Baltimore from all over the world to come and see the city that's the father of Gothic fiction and horror and the father of mystery here in the United States. So come out this weekend. Next slide, please. I'm here to share ten things to know about Poe Fest International. First is that general admission is free. This event is two days of music, books, performance, art, writing, all inspired by Edgar Allan Poe. This is a free community event. Stage program, vendors, sponsored by Raven Beer. There will be a Poe Movies tent. The skull on our program is sometimes a little bit scary, but this is a family-friendly event. We do have a lot of art activities for kids. This is the kickoff for Halloween season, so definitely come on out to see us, and you can find more of our program at poefestinternational.org. Can't attend? We do have a virtual program. Next slide, you can see the program broadcast streaming live on YouTube, Twitch, and Facebook. So this is an opportunity just to see the entire program. You can come one day and then see the program on Sunday, or you can see the program on Saturday and be tempted to come out on Sunday. Our stage program has posted at poefestinternational.org. Folks in the room have a copy of our program, but these are just a couple of the performers and workshops that we'll be having. We'll have a coffin building workshop. Again, we'll have art and a lot of fun projects free for kids. Some of the acts that you'll see on our main stage, and again, all of this is part of the stage program. All of this is free to come out and see. And of course, Baltimore's own Raven Beer, they are a big sponsor, and proceeds do benefit the Edgar Allan Poe House and Museum. And if you join us for our unhappy hour on Saturday, you'll also be supporting the Poe Museum Richmond. There will be a double feature movie tent. We're excited about this one. You'll get to meet some of the filmmakers. These are Emmy Award-winning, this is an Emmy Award-winning company doing adaptations of The Tell-Tale Heart and The Raven, and a brand-new film for people to come out and see as part of the program. Tours have sold out in previous years, number four, so you want to get your tickets early. So even though the festival itself, general admission at the festival is free, and that includes our entire stage program, we do have additional tours. What if you want more Edgar Allan Poe? So we do have tours available. And next slide, you will see the VIP Death Weekend Bus Tour does take people to different sites in the city of Baltimore associated with Poe, the site where he passed away, the site where he was found, and the cemetery, of course, Westminster Hall. The Edgar Allan Poe House and Museum, again, a tour of the last surviving home in Baltimore where Poe lived with his family. And then the Edgar and Virginia Poe Death Exhibit. We are very excited about this. This exhibit will be at Westminster Hall even some extended days, a week after the festival, but we'll have a tableau with Edgar Allan Poe's body in a casket, plus a lot of sentimental art, morning jewels, and some of these things made from human hair. It's a lot of fun. So poefestinternational.org is where you can find tickets for those extra events, but the festival itself is free. Poe House does require tickets for entry. Again, the Edgar Allan Poe House and Museum, tiny, six-hundred-and-twenty square feet. A lot of people come to Baltimore expecting the House of Usher, not expecting to see the sort of modest life that Poe led. So when you come to Poe House, if we had made it a free part of admission, we'd love the house to splinter, so all of this is to preserve the Poe House, all of this is to benefit the museum. Attendees do enjoy special rates at Lord Baltimore Hotel. Plug for wonderful haunted Lord Baltimore Hotel. They've been very good to us this year, and I think with a lot of the events going on this weekend, the hotel might be sold out, but coming up for that. Bus lines do bring you to Poe Fest International, including the Charm City Circulator takes you past Bio Park, which is just a couple of blocks from the festival. In addition, there is an area for Lyft and Uber to drop off on the next slide, at the corner of Schroeder and West Lexington Streets. All right. The Black Cat Ball is the official party of the International Edgar Allan Poe Festival and Awards that will be this year at Westminster Hall. Our theme for the party this year is Gothic Wedding. This is the two-hundred, this year is the two-hundredth birthday of Edgar Allan Poe's wife and muse, Virginia Poe. And so in honor of her two-hundredth birthday, we're having a Gothic wedding-themed party at the Black Cat Ball Saturday night, and that evening, we will be announcing the winners of the Saturday Visitor Award. So that's a lot of fun. Our VIP ticket also includes a tour of the famous Westminster catacombs and an opportunity to exchange eternal vows of love with a special someone. You don't have to promise to love them for the rest of your life, you just have to promise them after you die. The Saturday Visitor Awards, winners will be announced festival weekend. We have announced the nominees. If you visit our YouTube page, you will get to see some of the wonderful nominees from around the world. This year, new generation of artists and writers inspired by Edgar Allan Poe. We announce the winners festival weekend, they get a medal. I'm a big fan of Michael Phelps, so we give medals. And really, just a really fun evening, so coming out for that. Festival includes programming from preeminent Poe places. As I said, there are several places where Poe lived. There are several cities that like to claim Poe. We all know that Baltimore is the city that loves Poe the most, and he lives here now because we have the body and the ravens, yes, absolutely. But we will see some representatives from these other locations, the Poe Museum, Richmond, the United States Military Academy, West Point, where Poe was a cadet for Reef Tyne, Westminster Hall, of course, and the Bronx County Historical Society is where the Poe Cottage is in the Bronx. But you'll get to meet representatives from all of these organizations when you come out for the festival. Learn more about Poe. And that is the end. I hope everyone will come out. This is a special weekend, though, for Southwest. Not only is it Poe Fest International, which is two days, but this weekend will also be Pig Town Festival, so you can make it a Southwest kind of weekend and come on out to both of those events, one Saturday, one Sunday.
Well, thank you so much. We know that Baltimore is in the heart and the mind of Poe, everything that we do, so we appreciate you continuing to glorify, I guess, Baltimore's history and culture, particularly as it relates to Edgar Allan Poe. So thank you so much and sharing for the Baltimore City Council tonight. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please read the roll.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal of the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two proceedings are on the councilmember's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of tonight's agenda. We will now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first nomination.
EA twenty-two dash zero-one-two-three, Deborah T. Brooks, Director, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. We will now move to bills to be introduced tonight. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-six, Sale of Property, Southside Boston Street, Southwest Corner and South New Kirk Street, Block Six-Five-Eight-Seven, Lot Zero-Zero Eight-A, and Southside Boston Street, Southeast Corner and South New Kirk Street, Block Sixty-Five-Eight-Seven-A, Lot Zero-One-Six, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain properties located at Southside Boston Street, Southwest Corner, and South New Kirk Street, Block Six-Five-Eight-Seven, Lot Zero-Zero Eight-A, and Southside Boston Street, Southeast Corner, and South New Kirk Street, Block Sixty-Five-Eight-Seven-A, Lot Sixteen, and are no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is President Mosby on behalf of the comptroller.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-seven, Real Estate Practices, Disclosures, Historic Districts, for the purpose of requiring certain disclosures in order to sell a property that is located in a historic district and providing for certain penalties. Sponsor is Councilmember Bullock, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Torrance at the request of the Commission on Historic and Architectural Preservation.
At this time, I would like to call on the deputy councilmembers for the Ninth District. No, at this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember for the Ninth District, Councilman Bullock. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and yes, the deputies are with me this evening. Again, thank you for the opportunity. As you know, one of the roles I have is being the city council's representative on our Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, and quite often, folks do come in front of the commission, come in front of CHAB, saying that they purchased a house in an historic district not knowing so and not knowing the requirements as it relates to maintaining the property to historic standards. And so I know I've seen this in Vice President Middleton's district, I know also in Councilman Torrance's district, and Councilman Schleifer has also seen this happen, and so we think it's appropriate to have realtors disclose this information so that buyers are aware of the requirements and that we can avoid this kind of confusion, and so I look forward to the support of our colleagues and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the work on this bill. I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey, Chairman Conway, Councilman Burnett, Chairman Schleifer, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Glover, and Councilman Cohen. At this time, Madam Vice President, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill? You're good. Did I see the hand raised of Councilmen Torrance? You're on the corner, okay. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-eight, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Variance Is Twenty-Nine Zero Five Parkwood Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit into Three Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District on the property known as Twenty-Nine Zero Five Parkwood Avenue, Block Thirty-Two Thirty-Two-A, Lot Three, is outlined and read on the accompanying plat, and granting variances for certain bulk lot area size and off-street parking requirement. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-three-nine-R, Investigative Hearing, Human Trafficking Investigations and Prosecutions. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Office of the State's Attorney, the Baltimore Police Department, the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore City Public School System Police, the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Homeland Security Investigations, the Maryland State Police, the Maryland United States Attorney's Office, the Maryland Department of Social Services, the Maryland Department of Juvenile Services, the Hope Center formerly known as Baltimore Child Abuse Center, Blue Dot, and other collaborators from the Baltimore Human Trafficking Collaborative who provide identified victims of human trafficking with emergency interventions and supportive services. To brief the city council on the scope of the human trafficking problem in Baltimore City, current efforts to investigate and prosecute perpetrators of human trafficking, further strategies that could be implemented to bring these individuals to justice, and resources that are needed to assist survivors of human trafficking. Sponsor is Councilmember Burnett, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Torrance.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the member of this body who's been a pillar to ensuring that this topic constantly stays on the forefront as it relates to policy. He's a subject matter expert to the council on it. At this time, Councilman Burnett, if you could please stand and talk to us about this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. One, just for your continued support on all of the legislation that we've brought forth on this important issue of human trafficking in Baltimore City. Looking to have a holistic hearing, we're bringing in the entire ecosystem of support from both government agencies, law enforcement, and community and victim-based services to take a look at what the current situation is for folks who've experienced human trafficking. Where are we on the investigation and prosecution? Where are we in the wraparound support services that are needed? It's the first time we've had a hearing since, the first time I had a hearing on this five years ago, which got me into the issue in the first place because it was very clear that there needed to be more cohesion. Since then, we formed the Baltimore City Human Trafficking Collaborative, which is the largest collaborative in the state of Maryland with over fifty-five partners that meet quarterly to share information, and we have subcommittees that are doing a lot of work, so we'll feature a lot of that in the hearing. So I know it's in the Public Safety Committee, but I'd invite all of you to come and see a little bit more about the work that's being done on this important issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you. I see the hand raised of Councilman Bullock, Councilwoman Ramos, Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Dorsey. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, the next resolution.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-four-zero-R, Informational Hearing Permit Reforms. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Office of the City Administrator, the Baltimore City Fire Department, Office of the Fire Marshal, and other relevant parties to provide information on reforms to the Department of Housing and Community Development's permit process. Sponsor is Councilmember Ramos, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Bullock.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This resolution is for a hearing to review the Baltimore City Permits Office. This is the office that homeowners and developers go to for building permits. We've had complaints in our office from both homeowners and developers about the slow processing times, the inspections, and several other issues. Some contractors claim they won't do business here in Baltimore or will charge more to do so because of the permit office. This leaves residents with few choices and more expenses. We have several examples in my district where there are delays in processing and plans are approved but then fail inspection and other issues that have cost homeowners and businesses time and money. We know that DHCD is working on reforms of the permit office, and this hearing is designed to allow for DHCD to outline their reforms, hear from the public, and understand how we can assist in addressing this issue. This is also important as we continue to move forward on addressing our vacant properties and making sure that our developers, our homeowners, and others that are working to rehab them are able to do so in an efficient manner. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any additional cosponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Porter, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, next resolution, please.
City Council Resolution Twenty-two dash zero-one-four-one-R, Paraprofessional and School-Related Personnel Appreciation Week. For the purpose of recognizing the week of October third through the seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and the first full calendar week of October annually thereafter, as Paraprofessional and School-Related Personnel Appreciation Week, to celebrate the invaluable contributions of Baltimore City's paraprofessionals and school-related personnel in educating and caring for our children. Sponsors are Councilmember Cohen, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Dorsey.
At this time, the body would like to recognize gentlemen from the First District. The floor is yours, Councilmember.
Thanks so much, Mr. President, and thank you to the PSRP's who've joined us today and to the Baltimore Teachers Union for cosponsoring this week. As a former teacher, I know that paraprofessionals are some of our most underrated, underappreciated, but necessary workers in our school system. Too often, the folks who maybe clean the lunchroom, the folks who get those lunches out, the folks who are supporting young people, the folks who are just there for a hug, they are some unsung heroes in our system. I will just say that as a young person who had learning challenges growing up, it was not actually teachers at first, it was paraprofessionals that really supported me and were a big part of who I am today. So I thank you for your work, and, Mr. President, without, I'm sorry, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are suspended.
I move the resolution to be adopted.
It's been moved in probably second. Madam Clerk, if you could please call roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
The resolution is approved. The motion is approved, the resolution is now adopted. Now we call back to the gentleman from the First District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke Rule seven dash three to extend floor privileges to some guests in our gallery.
Without objection, we'll have guests on the floor. Hearing and seeing none, please present the guests.
This resolution, the City Council of Baltimore, be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Baltimore City paraprofessionals and school-related personnel in support of your tireless service to Baltimore City's school communities, students, families, and staff. The entire membership wishes, extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on this third day of October twenty-twenty-two. Signed, the President, myself, and the entire council for you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilman Cohen, for that. Next, we're going to go to consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in prob, it's been moved, it's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do so, I would like to call on Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. Without any objections, we will be in short titles for the duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. First up, we will go to education, workforce, and youth. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0104R, informational hearing, degree requirements for city positions.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the committee, Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Nice time.
The committee, thank you. I have a towel on. The committee held a hearing on September 22nd, 2022. There are technical amendments on each of the council members' desks. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
I move the resolution favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to Economic Community Development. At this time, the floor would like to recognize Madam Vice President. The floor is yours. Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. First, we got to read it in. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0218, city property renaming Robert E. Lee Park to Lake Roland Park.
Now, we turn to you, Madam Vice President. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You threw me off because you usually economic development comes first.
And Jose is up here keeping me honest, so that's why we had to read it first.
Bill number 22-0218, this bill was heard on September 20, 2022. We did have some requirements to be submitted to our files, and that was proof that the name change is equitable and equal name, and we do have that information in our files. So, I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. The bill will be printed for third reading. Next, we're going to go to 22223. Sorry for my Baltimore accent.
City Council Bill 22-0223, downtown management district and downtown management authority.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Bill number 220223 was also heard on September.
She has a Baltimore accent as well.
Was also heard on September 20th, 2022. I move the bill as favorable.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Next up, 22-228. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0228, midtown community benefits district amendment.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Bill number 22-228 was also heard on September 20, 2022. I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the move, the amendment is approved. Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Vice President.
And I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Next up, we are going to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0252, commercial vehicle monitoring system.
I would like to recognize Chairman of the committee, Chairman Schleifer. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on Council Bill 22-0252, Commercial Vehicle Monitoring System.
She has a Baltimore accent as well.
On September 29th, 2022, and it passed. There are no amendments, and I'd like to move the bill favorable and request a roll call vote.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Can we do a roll call?
Okay, I got you. At this time, we're going to read the rule.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway.
Yeah, you would like to speak to your vote?
I'd say thank you to Chairman McCray for bringing this bill forth. I have been asking for these vehicle monitoring systems at multiple locations in my district for as long as I have been in office, and I have not been able to get a single one placed anywhere in my district. For as long as we have had them, I have many, many constituents who are asking for these in numerous locations, along Perrin Parkway, Hillen Road, Urbman Avenue, Old Harford Road, and I cannot say how much I look forward to being able to help these constituents with the placement of these with the increased number from six to 16. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chairman McCray.
Thank you.
Conway.
Yes.
Schleifer.
My vote.
Yes, sir.
While I appreciate the intent of the bill, in the hearing, we learned of two big concerns. Number one, with the use of these cameras across the city, that there would be thousands of businesses in the city that can't get deliveries that are not along a truck route essentially. And so, if delivery trucks come to deliver to those businesses, then essentially they could possibly be subject to fines and would be subject to fines. The solution that DOT tries to come up with in certain instances obviously would not work in every place and across the city. And so, what you have is a lot of corner stores and smaller businesses throughout our neighborhoods that when potato chips are being delivered, or sodas are being delivered, or fruits and vegetables are being delivered, those trucks would routinely be getting citations, and therefore, perhaps those companies would decide they're not going to deliver to those stores anymore, and they might have to pick up the goods. And there's a series of other challenges that would end up affecting these thousands of businesses. And so, that's my number one concern. Another concern that was brought up at the hearing is the amount of money that the city is losing on the current program. And so, when you just do the basic math on how much we're losing divided by the amount of the six cameras, and you multiply that by 16 cameras, essentially, we would potentially be losing close to $1 million a year on this program. And so, while I do believe this is an issue that needs some type of solution, I don't believe that going from six to 16 cameras and subjecting the taxpayers to potentially $1 million a loss per year and these countless businesses throughout the city to the hardships that they're going to endure for it, that this is the proper solution. So, I vote no.
Thank you. There's been a lot of talk in the past about this. I know that the chairwoman, thank you for your explanation. I know the chairwoman has worked hard to get us in a solution where we are today. I know that she's committed in the future to ensuring that some of the proposed unintended consequences that might be out there, she'll continue to look at it and determine. At this point, just from a general knowledge of the public, there is no specific spots that these cameras are going to go in today. This provides an opportunity for the Department of Transportation to actually implement them. So, with that, we appreciate your concerns, and it's something that the council needs to continue to monitor and work with DOT on. Madam Clerk.
Middleton.
Yes.
And my vote is a yes, and it's a yes because this is, again, yes, this is way overdue, especially through COVID. It's been very lax with these vehicles going through residential areas, destroying streets, different hours of the day. We have certain routes that commercial vehicles must follow, and I think this is just going to help to realign and put things back in order.
Thank you.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a yes. I do want to acknowledge, though, my colleague from the Fifth District who did raise some significant concerns about the rollout of this. I think that DOT is going to have to be very diligent on how they do that. I am a yes vote. The sponsor, my colleague from the Second District, did do an extraordinary amount of due diligence in bringing this issue to the table.
As always.
As always, so I commend her for that, and I look forward to working with DOT carefully to make sure that we do not create an additional burden for our small business community in the city. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a yeah.
Stokes.
Yes, sir.
My vote is yes, but I think this is long overdue. Over in the Berea community, the last 20 years, they have tractor trailers coming through their neighborhood, and mostly poor, black, and brown neighborhoods. So, this been going on a long time. This didn't happen when COVID started, so I think it's a good start, but DOT need to roll it out right, like you said, Mr. President, so my answer is yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
My vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I'm a yes. During the hearing, we did learn that DOT would work with businesses to make sure that there weren't any unintended consequences, which I think is important in my district because we've had a lot of construction and some other things happening. It's very important that residents know that there's a way that they can make sure that there are, these big trucks can't be going through the residential areas, even if there isn't construction sometimes they're cutting through. A big truck got stuck in Oak and Shaw one time last year, and that was really crazy. So, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again, and I'm very glad that Chairman McCray brought this up, and I'm a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this bill is passed on second reading and will be printed for third reading. Of course not. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I do want to acknowledge what my colleague from District Five did say. I want to make it very clear that this is not something that's going to cost the city millions and millions of dollars. Many of these cameras are cost-neutral, and many of these cameras actually generate funds. This is going to be outweighed by these vehicles coming through our neighborhoods, the money that we have to pay out from being on destroying our infrastructure on roads that they're not supposed to be on. Also, it's going to be outweighed by the issues that our constituents have with their foundation shaken, the additional repairs that they have to put into their homes. As we are making sure that we are maintaining population, we want to keep those residents and make sure that they are whole and that we're protecting them. These vehicles are going off route, and they should not be. To say that vehicles will not be able to deliver to corner stores, to grocery routes, that is completely untrue. You will still be able to receive your potato chips. But this is going to look into those particular issues that we need to address, and these cameras should not just be on truck routes, and these trucks, and these vehicles should not be coming through our neighborhoods consistently. We need to make sure that we are putting forth legislation that addresses all areas and that we're being creative about tackling the problems, the core problems, the ones that we can see that our constituents are concerned about, and they're coming to us about daily. I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and I do acknowledge your concerns, Councilmen, but a few of them we just don't agree on. But thank you so much.
You feel if you would like to respond? The floor would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Yeah, I mean, just because we got into a little bit of the weeds on it. So, at the hearing, the Department of Transportation testified that based on the average of what they're losing a year, came out to about $57,500 per camera. Obviously, there are some cameras that are, that are making money, but there's some that are losing, which is why we took the total loss that they're projecting that they're losing a year, which, if I recall correctly, I think it was approximately $345,000 is what they had told us. And then, when you multiply, when you divide that by six and then multiply that by 16, that's $920,000. Now, there's other costs that are associated with that, signage and other educational costs, and so, that's where we get to the number of just approximately $1 million. And so, and also, the other thing that I just want to also go back to what DOT did say was that there are thousands of businesses across the city that are located, that are not on a truck route, and if there is a camera that is on a street that is near that business, that when that truck is delivering there, they are subject to the citations. Now, yes, there is a way after the fact, if you want to start, you know, saying, oh, it's a regular delivery and it's coming quite often, then they can try to work around that, and they've tried to do that in some of the locations where there are the six cameras. But there will be thousands of businesses, as DOT testified, that will be having these challenges once these cameras do take place. And the other thing I want to point out, which I left off, and then I'll yield the floor, is that when we mapped out these current locations of the six cameras, they were primarily in downtown Baltimore. And so, while we all have areas in our district that we'd like one of these cameras, as the President mentioned, 16 is not going to cover the entire city, and there's a long list that they said that are spots that are requested, but they don't believe there's enough traffic there. So, there's actually a concern that if they actually prioritize the top six, which is what they're saying they have now, then those other locations would actually have a reduction of how much revenue is generated for them. And so, that's where I got to those numbers. But the hearing is also available on Charm TV, so we can all go back and watch it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer, as well as thank you, Chairman McCray, for bringing this forward. This bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if we could go into the ways and means.
City Council Resolution 22-0100R, informational hearing, judicial interim foreclosure.
At this time, we'd like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. We'll turn now to bills on third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-0221, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, variance 2315 Utah Place. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 22-0246, York Corridor Business Improvement District Establishment. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill 22-0257, Police Department of Baltimore City, Police Districts Redistricting. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Bills to be withdrawn can be found on page seven. That bill is the Johns Hopkins Police Department in the memorandum of understanding with the Baltimore Police Department. The sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Ramos, asked for it to be withdrawn, and it's withdrawn and can be found on page seven. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcement. First up, we're going to go to ECD. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings, which would, which will be held hybrid in the Clarence D. Burns Chambers at City Hall and online via WebEx. The first bill at 2:00 PM on November 1st, 2022, Bill number 22-0200, and that's the Urban Renewal Central Business District, Amendment Two. Sponsor, Costello. I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to move for suspension of Rule 10-2 to announce a public hearing for Bill 22-0279.
Without objection, we'll go to suspend Rule 10-2. Hearing and seeing none, 10-2 is now suspended. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Also, on November 1st, 2022, we will hear Bill number 22-0279 at 2:05 PM, and that's the Urban Renewal Coal Stream Homestead Montebello Amendment, and that was put in by the President for the administration, specifically housing. I would like to move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a public hearing for Bill number
Without objection, Rule 10-2 is suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Madam Vice President, you can proceed. Rule 10-2 is suspended.
Thank you. Also, on November 1st, at 2022, at 2:10 PM, we will hear City Council Bill 22-0280, and that's the Urban Renewal Johnston Square Amendment, and that's also put in by the President for the administration. Also, I'd like to move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a public hearing for Bill number 22-0281.
Without objection, Rule 10-2 is suspended. Without objection, Rule 10-2 is suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Rule 10-2 is suspended. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Also, on November 1st, 2022, at 2:15 p.m., we will hear Bill Number 22-0281, and that's another urban renewal Middle East amendment, and that's also put in by the president for the administration. And then I think there's one more that I need to move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a public hearing for Bill Number 22-0282.
Without objection, Rule 10-2 will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none. Madam VP, please proceed.
And also, on November 1st, 2022, at 2:20 p.m., we will hear Bill Number 22-0282, and that's the Urban Renewal Oliver Amendment, and that's also put in by the president for the administration.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We'll go to education, workforce, and youth. Chairman Stokes. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Next up, health, environment, and technology. Chair McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee will hold a hearing for Resolution 22-0108R investigative hearing, Drew Lake and Ashburton Water Tanks on Wednesday, October 19, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. The committee will also hold a hearing for Resolution 22-0091R informational hearing, the effects of post-traumatic stress disorder on first responders on Wednesday, October 26, 2022, at 10:01 a.m. The hearings will be held in the council chamber and also through WebEx. Thank you.
Clerk, next up, we're going to go to Public Safety Government Operations. Thank you, Chairman Conway. Next up, we're going to Rules Legislative Oversight. Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on LO 22-0028 on October 20th at 1:00 p.m. at the request of Chairman Conway for legislative oversight hearing on Safe Streets. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will also hold a hearing the same day on 22-0121R on October 20th at 2:00 p.m. for an informational hearing on the 2022 primary election irregularities at the request of Councilwoman Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Schleifer. Last, but certainly not least, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello. Thank you. I do want to go back, Madam Clerk, to City Council Bill 22-257. It was voted out 15 to 0. I know that on second reader, there were some concerns by some of our members. The way that we can recall a vote is if you're on the prevailing side, obviously, you have the ability to change your vote before we close out the meeting. So at this time, I would like to provide an opportunity for Chairman Stokes, as well as Chairman Costello, for a motion of reconsideration of vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move reconsideration of Council Bill 22-0257.
It's been moved. It's been moved and properly seconded. We're going to do a reconsideration of a vote. So at this time, for third reading, typically to general public's knowledge, we just voted out. You don't hear say aye or go in opposition or affirmative of our vote, but we will actually do a roll call now where members will go through, and the ayes will say aye and the nays will say nay, just to ensure that the record reflects the accurate voting motivation of the individual council members. So Madam Clerk, please read it in again and then go through the roll call. Hold on one second. Yes, some unreadiness.
Are we voting on what our vote would be? Are we voting to allow a revote?
We voted to allow a revote. Well, no, no, no. We voted to allow them to change their vote, basically. That's what we just voted on.
So if we vote yes, we're allowing them to have another chance to vote?
Correct.
Okay.
When did you reconsider the bill?
We agreed to reconsider the bill. Now we're voting the bill again.
Correct.
Okay.
Any more unreadiness? Yep.
Mr. President, I'm sorry. I was just...
It's fine.
I think the confusion was I heard a motion and a second to reconsider, but I didn't hear a vote to reconsider.
Say that one more time.
I heard a motion.
You heard a vote to reconsider, but you didn't hear a vote to do what?
I didn't hear a vote on whether we should reconsider the bill.
Yeah, so the reality is that's what we're voting on now.
Got you. So we're going to take two votes.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
It was moved and properly seconded, right? Now, we're going to go through and vote. What I was explaining to the general public is, as opposed to the clerk flying through the names, we're going to actually hear everyone say aye, right? Because I think this is an important thing to do from a reconsideration perspective. And then she's going to read it back in, and we're going to actually vote on the bill. And the expectation is we'll have two nays. All right? We on the same page? You good? Madam Clerk, please read the names.
City Council Bill 22-0257 Police Department, to reconsider, City Council Bill 22-0257 Police Department of Baltimore City Police Districts Redistricting. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello. Stokes.
No.
Glover.
No.
Ramos.
That's fine. That's fine, guys. You want to change that vote, too? All right, good. So we're good. So the vote for us to reconsider carries. All right, so I think we have ensured that the record reflect that Councilman Glover, as well as Chairman Stokes, reconsidered, all right? So now we're going to re... Come on. Now, we're going to go into the actual vote, all right? Because we reconsidered the vote. Now, we're going to vote it out. Are we ready? All right.
City Council Bill 22-0257 Police Department of Baltimore City Police Districts Redistricting. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Nay.
Stokes.
No.
Glover.
No.
Ramos.
There we go. That bill is now approved. It's nothing but some fun at the end of a council meeting. We will now move to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements? I see the hand raised of Councilman Dorsey. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to wish both of my parents speedy recovery. They are both experiencing COVID-19 right now. But in particular, I want to wish my mom... Not that I don't love my dad, but my mom, it's my mom's birthday, and so I just want to say happy birthday to my mom. And she watches these council meetings religiously, and so she's there.
Say her name. Speak to her real quick for us.
Everybody here should wish my mom, Carmen Dorsey, a happy birthday. Thank you very much. But I'm going to take her out when she's feeling better. COVID-19 is still a real thing, by the way.
Thank you for that public service announcement, and happy, happy birthday, Mom. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
I just wanted a moment of silence for Lee Douglas, who is a retired veteran here in Baltimore, who was very active in the community, passed away, and Senator Irby, Councilman Irby, Mailman Irby, his son Dana Irby passed away yesterday.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. Madam VP, if you could please capture those two names. Councilman Torrance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request a moment of silence for Reverend Ruby Purnell, who is the mayor of Smallwood, a big figure in West Baltimore and the church. There's one thing I knew about that woman. She knew God, and she loved every person that she interacted with. And on another personal note, the 7th District is sponsoring a community cleanup with the Penn North community on October 15th. We would love if the public come out and support us as we add in new green spaces, as well as help our elders with urgent needs and backed up SRS as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a moment of silence for William Brandon, nicknamed Pop. He was a coach down in Southern who just recently passed away after a long battle of illness. Just want to, you know, give condolences out to his family. Great guy, young dude, but really, really cared about those students over at Southern Baptist... Excuse me, at Southern High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you, Mr. President. In similar fashion with my other colleagues, I just want to offer a moment of silence for Ms. Faith Hope Cunningham. She passed away on Sunday, and I went to her funeral today. She was a pillar in the Cherry Hill community, always lifting up local elected leaders like ourselves. She was always constantly praying for us. And so I just want to honor her and honor her legacy. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask for a moment of silence for my aunt, Colleen Corky Costello Philak. She suffered an excruciating disease for over 25 years, scleroderma, and recently passed about two months ago. We actually celebrated her life last weekend in Pittsburgh. She had this sign in her kitchen. I actually had to look it up online, but she had this little wooden sign in her kitchen that said, "Coffee in hand, big girl panties pulled up, sparkle in my eye, and smile on my face. I'm ready for the day. Bring it on." She was one of the toughest people I know, so I just wanted to take a minute to ask for that moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, once again, acknowledge the victims to Hurricane Ian. My parents are down in Florida, and fortunately, they're safe. They're fine. But they had some significant flooding, and I know a lot of families are struggling right now. Councilwoman Ramos acknowledged the devastation in Puerto Rico a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, folks are really struggling right now, and I just want to, you know, put that out there for folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two things. One is reminder, in two weeks, October 15th is the Baltimore Marathon. It goes through my district three times, so we don't get to leave. But we are very excited to have some runners in our council that will be running. It will be awesome to see you all there. I haven't signed up yet, but I'll be there. So that should be a fun day. The Baltimore Running Festival is always a great day. So just wanted to remind our council members and also the public, we do this for the last 21 years. There will be traffic and things that get disrupted for the morning, but it is a wonderful, wonderful day. On Mile 23, my husband DJs, so you'll hear amazing Caribbean music, because that's the only way you're going to get up that hill. So it's a lot of fun. And secondly, I just want to thank my colleagues who are, and today, all of our advocates who were out there today in the rain, and I know many of my colleagues couldn't make it, but support the inclusionary housing bill that we've all been working on, and we look forward to continuing negotiations to have a great bill. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett. Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to request a moment of silence for Ms. Muriel Prelo, who passed away last week. She was the longtime president of the Evergreen Protective Association. She was somebody I met 17 years ago when I bought my house, actually from her. And at the closing table, she had mentioned, "You should come out to the Neighbor Association Meet. We have a really strong association." And I started coming out to the meetings, and they put me to work, and I wound up becoming the vice president later on to president. So it was really that relationship that set me on the path to being here today. So definitely want to recognize Ms. Muriel Prelo.
Is that it for regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
You were all testing me today. You know we have a format for the moment of silence, but I, before we close out, I do want to recognize and for all of you to remember that this month is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I have on my pink today to start that off. Please support the American Cancer Society and other nonprofits that are really out there that continue to fight and raise money for all types of cancer. Every family in here has been affected some way by cancer, so extend our prayers to those families as well. And the next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we will have a moment of silence also for the 254 now victims of homicide this year, and the many Baltimoreans who have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic and our continued opioid epidemic. And may we also have a moment of silence for the son of former Senator and Councilmember Nathan Irby. His son's name is Dana Irby, and also Mr. Lee Douglas Jr., Reverend Rudy Farrell Purnell, William Brandon, Faith Cunningham, Colleen Corky Costello Philak, okay, and Myrtle Prelu, and also the victims that are really, that have died and are still suffering from Hurricane Ian. Thank you.
The next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, we'll recognize everyone for coming out. We truly appreciate it. Baltimore, we absolutely love you.